Well, do the oath of office for newly reelected Board of Education member Dale Colton. If you'd raise your right hand, please, and repeat from here to here, please.
Okay. I, Dale R. Colton, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will truthfully discharge the duties of Board of Education members from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And if you would sign that. Congratulations, Dale.
Thank you.
Teresa Ray, okay, sorry.
I now declare nominations open for reelection of President of the Board of Education.
I nominate Teresa Ray.
I second it.
We have a nomination for Teresa Ray for President of the Board of Education, motion by Megan, second by Sue Fries. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I now declare nominations for President of the Board of Education closed. And we will vote for President of the Board of Education. See, be it resolved that Teresa Ray. He voted on for President of the Board of Education and a roll call vote will be taken on the nominee. Colton?
Yeah.
Early? Breeze?
Yeah.
John is absent. Excused. McCune?
Yeah.
Ray? Yes, you can.
Then yes.
Sandy? Motion passed. Congratulations. If. If you don't mind, we'll do the Vice President. I now declare nominations open for election of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Carrie John?
We have a nomination for Carrie John, motion by Dale Colton, second of Megan. McCune, are there any other nominations for Vice President? Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Okay, we will. Vote for Vice President of the Board of Education, be it resolved that Carrie John. He voted on for Vice President of the Board of Education and a roll call vote will be taken on the nominee. Colton?
Yeah.
Early? Breeze?
Yeah.
John is excused. McCune?
Yeah.
Ray?
Yeah.
And Sandy. Congratulations, Mr. John.
We will do the Board President.
Do the oath of office for Board President.
Raise your right hand and go, repeat from here to here, please.
I, Teresa A. Ray, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education President according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll do the oath of office for Board Vice President at a later date. And our Board President Teresa Ray will assume leadership of the meeting at 5:36.
Yeah, will we do our oaths first?
We can.
Yep, just so we're the agendas.
Probably because I'm sorry, I didn't. The agenda's so long and tedious, sorry. We'll do the oath of office for Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, and Assistant Superintendent before we turn it over to Teresa Ray.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. You'd raise your right hand and repeat from here to here, please.
I, Robert J. Breitenstein, do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent of the Schools according to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Mark D. Beeler, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Deputy Superintendent according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. We can either, she can do it at a later date or later tonight, whichever we prefer. Now I'll turn it over to the Board President Teresa Ray at 5:38. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, I'd just like to say thank you, everybody, for nominating me again and for the faith you've shown in me. I will try to do the best that I can, always know that, for the school district, and I always have the school district's best interest in hand at everything that I do. So, again, thank you. So my first order of business will be, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Sue, second by Mag. Are there any questions, comments? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Next, we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel in a particular person.
Or persons. Person or persons, yes.
Okay, we need a motion. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And we will.
Adjourn to the library and then we'll be back shortly.
An unknown error occurred.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to regular session. And let's see here, we need, we're moving on to items nine, which is our consideration of regular resolutions. And the first one is. The motion, we need a motion to approve the consideration of the regular resolutions.
Is that what this is?
Yeah, yeah.
Which was handed out earlier tonight. Okay. That's just to cheat you, okay?
So that's what they are.
Okay. Oh, yeah, 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 I see. So we need a motion to approve the consideration of regular resolutions. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on any of the resolutions?
So when we're making changes to the code of conduct, when will those go into effect? Let's say if you have a record and you have a public hearing and everything is a fall and it.
Whenever.
Oh, sorry. So my question was, because we're currently making some changes to the code of conduct. So when, if that goes through the process of a public hearing and all of that, when?
Yeah, we would treat that just like we would for the Indigenous policy and procedures. We approve it in July at the reorganization meeting. And then when and if we make additional changes, we treat it just like any other resolution or any other policy adoption. Yep.
Are there any other questions? And we have a motion by Dale, second by Brad. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item 10 is our public communications. Do we have anyone here from Title VI? Okay.
There was a Title VI email that did go around, I believe, this afternoon, trying to set the dates for Title VI. So we'll get those dates to the board once we confirm them.
Okay, do we have any other public communication? Yes.
I don't have to push a button or anything. All right, well, this is my first Board of Education meeting. Never really felt the need to be here. I do have a couple of points I'd like to bring up today. While I'm not fully versed or educated in this particular school system, whether it adheres to New York State law, education, their laws in New York. I was able to find. New York State law that says, it's 802 in the New York State education law that says that on legal holidays in New York, they must raise the American flag. On July 4th, it was not raised. I'm not here to debate whether the Seneca Nation flag or the American flag should be raised, but the one flag that was raised, I'm here to debate the pride flag. No, I'm not here for Indigenous colored people. People of color has nothing to do with whether this flag stands for that or not. I'm here for the underlying statement of the flag, which contains sexuality. Now agree that it should be introduced to our kids at any age, nonetheless at nine and 10. More than one family has, and I believe it's slightly an epidemic in this school, that have come home at nine, 10 years old, girls that are unsure of their own sexuality when they don't have any yet. I don't see how this could be stood up for by anybody. The Native Americans have a flag. The BLM, I mean, there's flags, but the gay pride or whatever the pride flag has become, hiding behind Indigenous people or people of color, it's not right. It's just, they're just hiding behind it. Now they've earned a sovereignty of a people or a race that has nothing to do with them. I guess what I'd like to know more than anything is, does this school adhere to New York State law when it comes to the education? Does? Okay, so 802 states that you must display the flag on legal holidays. Is there a reason why on July 4th it was not? Any idea?
Yes, Mr. Pierce, as I noted, when I had called, after you'd originally called, there was an error on the part on Friday, July 2nd, with the changing of custodial staff, that the individuals who normally raised the American and Seneca flag, they were off, and the custodian that was on duty that day did not do that and was not aware that the flags were not flying. They just assumed that they were up. The student flag that you're referencing is a student display. It's part of the district, but it is not a flag that is raised and lowered by the district. It's supposed to be raised and lowered by the students. In that particular case, there were no students in session that day, but it does come up and does come down. And the American and the Seneca flags will fly on every business day that the school is open. The fourth was on a Sunday, and I believe that section of law does not require us to raise a flag on a.
Well, it does. It says that special provisions would be made by the Commissioner. States in the law clearly. Then also, I also have another point. Not sure, like I said, this is my first board meeting, probably won't be my last. Is there in place in this school, is there a guidelines for social media for faculty and student interaction? Is there any guidelines?
In terms of academics or in terms of.
Social media.
Social media, personal.
Personal social media.
There is not a personal social media policy in place by the district. There is a policy about student to staff fraternization that does reference appropriate interactions with students, but not, we don't have jurisdiction over the personal contact of any employee outside of school unless there's a specific legal action that's brought forward that's criminal in nature.
Well, my feeling is that there is a little bit of interaction between the faculty and the student where these girls may be a little young to be seeing the things that are on our social media accounts because we don't live every day at the school. We have our own lives and then we post things on there. I don't want, you know, my kid and I don't want another kid to fall into this trap of seeing alcohol, partying, just because they're friends with somebody on social media. I would, I mean, I don't understand, as far as when I was in school, this was, you know, you weren't allowed to interact with students outside of school. I mean, it was looked down upon. Now, now I understand social media is a little different today and it's public, you could say. But is there, can we not have some guidelines for what kids, impressionable kids can see on a faculty member's social media account? There's no way.
Jurisdiction over a staff member's personal pages.
Well, I guess in closing or whatever, I'd like to say that, you know, the message that was sent by not raising the American flag, whether it was a mistake or whatever, the flag that was being flown, this is not who we are gonna unite under as a community. You can't bring like a social or a political statement to a nine-year-old and have them be persecuted or, you know, looked down upon from any other member of the school, whether, you know, it's political or social, either or, is wrong. And I believe that honestly, the pride flag should be taken down. It should not be a topic of discussion for any age kids in this school. Not to mention, you know, I do understand older kids are gonna see it and, you know, take their own view upon it, but that bleeds down to the younger kids. Those older kids have a little brother and sister, you know, that they may talk to and they have to hear. I mean, we're talking about nine and 10-year-old kids there in the school that are being introduced to. I don't even get it. The sexuality part of it is just insane to me. What that flag represents, the colors on that flag, other than the brown and the black, don't mean anything to education or society. That's pretty much it.
You brought up two important points, and I'm independent of what the flag is, you're 100% correct. If the United States flag isn't flying, there should be no other flag flying. And that is, that is acknowledged as an error on our part. We had a student government flag pole that was installed. There were some, we did not formalize the communication of who was putting that flag up and who was not putting it and taking it down. We don't have lights. We follow very strictly, I would say, the US flag code, which indicates special regulations for schools. Many of the staff members here are veterans and we take pride in that. So bringing that to our attention, I think, is important, and that's something that we also need to make sure our students are aware of, is, do they know the flag goes up and down every day? Should it be taken down in inclement weather? What does that mean on holidays? And we will reflect on that and move forward with that. The other one that you brought up, which is the social media accounts, while we don't have jurisdiction, there's certain professional expectations we would expect for our staff. So if you would like to contact myself or Mr. Breitenstein with the particulars, we can probably hammer that out in a more appropriate manner and get to hopefully the root of the issue.
Right. I appreciate it.
We welcome people to come and express their views and concerns because it helps us understand any concerns that are out there, and we want more people to come to our meeting, so please, you're welcome anytime.
Thank you.
Okay, next we will move on to our Board of Education message. So let's start with Brad.
Hey, congratulations to all the newly elected officials and Dale for his reelection and I'm excited for the summer programs with the kids. I know my kids, although reluctant most of the time to go, I say they like them, so.
I wanna say, I really had a great time at graduation, you know, a couple of weeks ago. It was, it was a real, real fun event, and I've only received positive.
Chris, did you break, you break the computer?
I might have. I don't know. I lost everything. I didn't hear anything. I was sitting here and I'm like, I didn't hear anything.
Levi just texted, the power went out there.
Oh.
Okay, we had a big bang.
Okay.
Okay.
And uh graduation was awesome this year. It was fun to be a part of an outside graduation. You know, it is the first time in a long time that we had it. I think it was nice for the parents, but uh also for the board members that were there and the staff that was there. Everything went without a, off without a hitch, I, I thought. Um, and I'm looking forward to continuing it each year. If we have to have a couple of rain days, so be it, you know. But it's so much nicer just having it in the field and um I think the students appreciated it. I've heard nothing but positive comments. Um, I would like to say congratulations Dale for re-upping for another five years, you know, it is a long time. And uh it's nice that, you know, we're all committed. Um, and that when you re-up, it shows just how much um you're dedicated to the school district. So it's really appreciated. So thank you. And Meg, of course, you're gonna be so missed because you're such an available member of the board. Um, and it's uh, it's gonna be hard to say.
A couple more weeks.
Yes, a couple more weeks. So I won't shed tears quite yet, but you know, it'll probably be coming. And again, thank you to everybody for nominating me and electing me to be the president of the board. I am very honored and I do take pride in that. And I always, like I said, do try to do the best for the school that I possibly can. So thank you. And we can move on to central office message, cause I know Karen's probably trying to speak.
Um, I can't tell you who yet, but we selected a new food service manager tonight. Um, I, that's why I was late. I had to go offer him a position and he's accepted. So I need to finish up that paperwork and contract, et cetera. That'll come back uh here on Tuesday. But um with the two guys, uh Ryan and Dan that were here from Brigade, um after the interviews and everything were over, we were talking a little bit and stuff. And once they put out the announcement that we were doing this and that part of it was um going to be bringing in indigenous food, several different people, not just chef people, but like organizations reach out to them. Um, because they were so interested in that. So there's going to be, talk about collaboration, um, some stuff happening uh soon in that regard. So that'll be very, very cool. Um, one of them is actually a company from Texas. Um, one of them is a woman who lives in New York State, about an hour and a half away. So um it'll be very interesting um once we get rolling with that. So I'm super excited about that. Other than that, it's usual closing out, starting up, you know, all that good stuff. That's all I have. Dr. Beeler.
Um, I just wanted to make a note that our large portion of our summer programming, um including summer schools, some camps um for academics, um as well as our intervention services for the summer has started. Um, it's our second day. It went off well. Uh, our numbers at the elementary school are significantly larger than they have been in previous years. And each day, we, uh, several um new students request to join us. So it looks like we anticipated that the summer is going to be an even busier summer. Uh, I wanted to extend my appreciation and gratitude to the administrators who took on the extra challenge this year as well as to our staff members. They did have to go a little bit deeper into the ranks uh to have some uh non-traditional staff members, some SBA members who are filling in for some of the summer work. Our teachers, as we anticipated, um had a very busy eighteen months and are taking some time to uh re-center themselves and be focused for the fall. But that has not uh inhibited our ability to offer programming to uh our students. And over the next several weeks, that programming actually includes academic academics as well. So we're looking forward to seeing our students outside. One other note is that uh the CDC did provide additional guidance um with regard to masks for schools. Uh, we're waiting for a little bit more clarity to come from Dr. Watkins at the Cat County Health Department. So next week, Tuesday, I anticipate um a recommendation from our safety committee uh to the school board to implement those changes. Uh, there just seems to be too much confusion at this point in time over what the actual recommendation is. Um, and as always, we will simply rely on the safest measure until we have uh appropriate action to take uh to move forward that we know is safe. So at this point in time, we're gonna continue with the practices that we have had in place.
Um, I have heard too, the camps, that everybody's just raving about the camps. So everybody who's involved in those, because everybody seems really enjoying this. Bob, come on, take your leg.
Okay, um, so a couple of items. I did uh have a meeting yesterday regarding our planned conversations uh with both the city and the library board uh about the library. So I'll be following up with uh the library board and Mayor McGarra uh regarding those discussions about uh collaborative conversation and joint municipal agreements uh with the library. Uh, that is something we've been talking about for the past several uh weeks and months. Um, and uh I'll have some additional updates after we meet uh at the end of next week. Um, I agree with Karen. We did the food service interviews. It was fantastic. Uh, the food was phenomenal. The candidates were exceptional in there. Our partnership with Brigade is really something that we can be proud of. And the fact that um we were served four separate meals this afternoon. Uh, they were tasty and they were really quite well-prepared and they all raved about our kitchen setup as well as uh our school district is in review. So we're very excited to have um a candidate coming to us next week. So Karen, thank you for the partnership, candidate. Thanks for bringing that to us. Um, we really appreciate that and there's some really good things on the horizon for food service. Uh, quick transition, the New York State School Boards Association Convention is in October. And since our last uh meeting, uh we were informed that we have two Salamanca groups that have been invited to present. Uh, Mrs. Dudak and Mr. Carisi uh worked with our people services during the pandemic as well as a student uh group based on the conversations that they've been having about student advocacy items and topics. So we're very excited. Um, that's the good news. The bad news is Karen, I did not budget for an entire student group to go to New York City. So we'll have to figure that out. Um, we did meet today to discuss uh our capital project work. Just as a quick recap, uh we have phases three point three and three point four, which we are looking at um combining. And we will be coming back to the board. Uh, I will probably get you an update tomorrow with some recommendations. We are at the point where we will need some very specific directions for the Board of Education about uh the work um formerly known as three point three and three point four, which are now known as three point three, uh as well as future project work and future referendums. Um, uh, two, two more things quickly. Um, I did have a conversation and meet with SNIDAC, Santa Canation Industrial Development Corporation regarding some uh projects that we may be looking at doing jointly with the district that does tie in with some of our capital project work. Uh, so it was a very productive meeting. During the course of the meeting, after the meeting concluded, we were having conversations about things that the school district was doing and uh we received an incredible compliment from the staff uh in the scientific office who has children in our school district and they indicated that they felt internally safe, perfectly comfortable and thrilled that their child and children attend Salamanca school. So that was a really nice uh unsolicited uh commendation for our faculty and staff. And lastly, this afternoon, we received notification that we are nominated by Business First for a Brick by Brick Award in the community service category for the work that we have done on that's part to bring that accessible to the community. So that award is virtual. It's um Thursday, July twenty ninth. If a board member is interested in observing digitally, let me know. We'll get you the uh the connection of length. They will only allow us, I believe, four or five um digital slots there. Um, I do not know and have not seen uh who our competition is, so I will try to give that information to you. And uh I understand that there is, are some down wires in the community by the bus garage. So when we exit and adjourn this meeting, uh as always, adjourn.
I oppose abstain, motion carried. I have enough of our tuition rates, so we made a motion to approve uh one fifty-four. Rates K through seven, three hundred and thirty, rates eight through twelve. Motion. Motion by Dale. Second by Barb. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstain, motion carried. And here's our kayak usage agreement. So we need a motion to approve that agreement through twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Motion by Meg.
Second.
Second by Brad. Are there any questions on the agreement? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstain, motion carried. Item H is our resolution um dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one for the Board of Education, Salamanca District, Central School District, Catterick County, New York, adopting post issuance compliance procedures. We made a motion to approve post issuance compliance procedures. Motion. Motion by Brad.
Brad.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. And then item I is our Board of Education standing committees. Um, of course, under the personnel, I'll be myself and then now Carrie can. So we made a motion to approve the standing committees.
Tell me.
Motion by Sue. Second by Meg. Are there any questions on any of your committees? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Then our facilities usage, so we need a motion to approve the facilities usage fees and the motion by Barb. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. And then it is our universal primary contract. So we need to uh have a motion to approve that from July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Motion by Barb. Second by Meg. Are there any questions on this contract? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item Pau is our athletic trainer. So we made a motion to approve um Sue Hearn August first, twenty twenty-one through January of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Sue. Oh, enter a contract. Approve the trainer and the contract. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion by Sue, second by Dale. Are there any questions on the contract?
Just a notation, um, we did add mileage to this agreement. Sue does a significant amount of travel postseason for us and some tournament. She's limited by the number of hours per week, but given the travel and the distance, um, we did add mileage for Sue.
Okay. So we got uh motion by Sue, second by Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Please, the mileage, no.
Uh, I think it was fifty-seven and a half cents around.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Three forty. And then item H is our Indian policies and procedures under respect for business. situations, just to clarify, so we need a motion uh to approve the motion by Meg.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. And item fourteen is our personnel. So we need a um, item A is our list of a long, long list of all our personnel.
It is July.
Items. So we need uh move down to B and make the motion to approve the personnel consent and that.
Motion by your good.
Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on any of the items? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. And now we will turn it over for some interdiction.
Um, I'm gonna fly kind of a little um uncontrolled here just simply because I did see on the Zoom that there were at least um two individuals that were on the agenda to be appointed this evening. And uh the first was Dr. Sandra Simberts uh who is um being appointed uh as our Director of Exceptional Education. Uh, Sandra is exceptionally qualified, uh has her doctorate and brings to the Salamanca District or returns to the Salamanca District as an alumni. Um, uh, years of experience in elementary education, secondary education, curriculum instruction and remediation and acceleration for students. Uh, we are delighted to have Sandra return home from uh her current post as a curriculum coordinator in the Gwanda School District. And I'd like to welcome um Sandra back to Salamanca. And the other individual on this agenda, um.
Can we do this again next meeting? Because it's really nice when you have newly hired people and they get to see us all clapping and they get the public accolades for this, even if we can introduce some.
Yeah, yeah.
We, I, I am streaming it live on Facebook too.
We are streaming it live. Okay, so I'll continue. Awesome. Levi, to the rest of you.
Thank you, Levi.
So in the spirit of um, you know, campfire work, let's everybody turn our phones on so we have some light here. There we go. Um, uh, Dr. Sandra Simberts uh is uh joining us as our Director of Exceptional Education. And the individuals, uh there were quite a few individuals that had jumped on that are serving in uh co-curricular roles. I would just like to state that um our program would not be nearly as successful without the conscientious individuals uh on staff, whether they're teachers, clerical, custodial or other titled positions that serve our students in a multitude of uh roles, clubs, activities, advisorships, sports and activities. They help make our district better and enrich the lives of our students and make memories that will last a lifetime and hopefully impact children's lives in their future so that they can continue to find success as a direct result of the hard work and dedication of our Salamanca School District staff, our Board of Education and our community for graciously funding these types of programs for our students. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody that is on Facebook Live and you can.
We will invite, we will invite folks back uh next week on the twentieth so that we can do a proper introduction of them.
Next, we have our personnel for our extended day enrichment program. Our instructors, community ed, uh instructors and SBA extra duty assignments and rates. So we need a motion to approve all that's listed above.
Motion.
Motion by Meg.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. This is basically the number that I don't have.
Cause I ran it in. So uh this is to Pam Frank. Uh, dear Pam, it was great to speak to you last week and I am so happy to learn that the school has chosen a worthy recipient, Francis Lord Volunteer Service Award. I am closing a check for one hundred dollars payable to Riley John. And I'm also enclosing a letter to Riley that I hope will be included with the check. The Salamanca Area Historical Society and Museum is pleased that this award has been established. We feel that it is an appropriate way to utilize the memorial donations made for Roger Lord and honor. an appropriate way to utilize the memorial donations made for Roger Lord and honor both Roger and Fran Lord for the many volunteer contributions they have made to our community. I would also like to thank the school administration, especially Janet Cook, for their outstanding support in making this a reality. Sincerely yours, James K. Griffin, Salamanca City Historian. Thank you. And congratulations to Riley.
Yes, congratulations to Riley. That's awesome. We also have our Board of Education retreat and workshops that are coming up and the CA BOSS's meeting schedule and our upcoming events. So, our next board meeting will be next Tuesday here before we call it and July 20th. Then next is August 3rd.
So, if I may, for next, thank you. Next week, it will be a, we will have some personnel participants, but we will also have a number of presentations. We will hear from our student group on their GIS, Dr. Beeler, Geo Information Services?
Yes.
Geographic, geographic information.
Season here before we call it. And we'll have one next through August 3rd.
So, if I may, for next, thank you. Next week, it will be a, we will have some personnel, but we will also have a number of presentations. We will hear from our student group on their GIS, Dr. Beeler, Geo Information Services?
Yes.
Geographic, geographic information services and some of the work and projects that they are doing in that area. We will hear about the updates for our capital project work, well, current work, planned work, and possibly about future referendums to begin that conversation. And we will also have a conversation and an update on our hiring process for the board. And then probably an additional conversation about the work that we're doing for the board. Thank you.
We're off again? I'm about ready to hang up.
I know. They just sent, someone just sent me a picture of the baseball outfield netting snapped during a storm.
That's right.
Chad, what was that?
Someone just sent me a picture of the outfield netting on a field snapped during a storm.
Yeah, there's a couple files over there. I'll give you a damage report when we're done.
Hi, Karen and Ms. McGarrett, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Assistant Superintendent according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Do you want to do any other staff introductions? We have Erin Berry and Holly Urbansky, Kim Oaks on Zoom. The wifi's working, the power's out.
Wifi is working. Yeah. Tell, tell me again who.
Erin Berry, Holly Urbansky, Kim Oaks.
Oh, absolutely. Okay. All right. Can you leave my light on?
No.
Is this my best side?
They can leave it like that.
There you go. It's like every little here. We do have a few individuals on staff. First is Holly Urbansky. Holly is coming to us from a neighboring school district that touches us geographically. We are delighted that Holly is coming to us at Seneca Intermediate School. And, Meg got me. All right, awesome. And Holly, congratulations and welcome aboard. And we are delighted that you are here and looking forward to having you join our staff at Seneca Intermediate School. We have two new individuals joining us in the roles of Elementary Assistant Principal and Intermediate Assistant Principal. Erin Berry is coming to us via a long geographic distance, returning back to Western New York from, I believe, North Carolina, where she served in a primary role as an Assistant Principal dealing with students in an intermediate age range, as well as students needing additional interventions in a district with a significant amount of poverty, but high achievement and growing success. So, we are delighted that Erin is returning back home to Western New York. And the other Assistant Principal who will be assigned to Prospect Elementary School is Kim Oaks. Kim comes to us via Erie Tuboces with a significant amount of experience in staff development, particularly with a focus on literacy and early childhood development, as well as student services in a primary role for staff development skills, coming via Erie Tuboces. I'm sure we have had a number of our staff members participate in training that Kim has run through Erie Tuboces. And we are delighted to have Kim, Erin, and Holly join us this evening.
Can you talk about Sandra again? She's on.
Sandra is on. Awesome. I'm gonna actually start, and I'm gonna kick it over to Dr. Beeler, because he's been exceptionally quiet over there in the dark. Sandra Simbretz is coming to us via Gwanda Central School District. Sandra has exceptional experiences in curriculum development and student achievement and in her role and capacity as curriculum coordinator at Gwanda. I am sure that they are ruining the day that we stole one of their exemplary staff members. Sandra is a Salamanca alumni, and we are thrilled to have Sandra back home in Salamanca. Dr. Beeler?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Dudak, who has a few things that will be very close to you.
I'm gonna be your light. I'm giving my light. Thank you. So, Mr. Bright, thanks. Stole most of my thunder, but after an extensive interview process, Dr. Simbretz really rose to the top with all of her outstanding background in education. Again, being a Salamanca alumni, she does have extensive background as an ELA and literacy specialist and K-12 curriculum coordinator. She's well-versed in interventions to support students and staff of all areas. Her new role, she'll be overseeing the new district process for multi-tiered system of supports. And including that will be programs moving forward for gifted and talented students. So, congratulations, Dr. Simbretz, and welcome.
Thank you, everybody, to log back in too. We appreciate your patience with us. So, thank you. Did we miss anyone? Did we get every, did we get everybody?
Yep, we're good.
Then with that, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mag.
Second.
Second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for everyone's great patient.
Just a note, there is an active power line down. The road's blocked off front by the bus garage. And there's some minor damage with tree limbs and whatnot at Vets Park. There's also a tree down at Anta at the front.
That's what you're saying. You can't get home?
Yeah.
I can get home.
Thank you, folks. Have a great night.